The payment schedule, eight and a half or eleven. It starts twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. The other two items you have laying on there is April thirteenth, two oh four minutes of a board package, and November twenty seventh, two thousand and seven, minutes of a board package. And then there was also, you don't have, the two oh nine and two oh eleven we added to this. Just for it to be on the record, and two oh four, the board supervisors had a long discussion about debt service for school systems, we borrowed somewhere about thirty-eight or forty million dollars. And at that point in time, to give the school board some kind of guidance on where we were headed with debt service, the board passed a debt service limit of two million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, four eighty-five annually in Lewis County school system. Three years later, we were into the Rural Tree High School renovation. And at that point in time, the board agreed to raise that payment cap by one hundred thousand dollars to two million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, four eighty-five. And as a matter of fact, that debt service cap was adhered to all the way through the year twenty fourteen. In the year twenty fourteen, the board supervisors, some of which y'all were on then, approved a bond issue of eight million and twenty-five thousand dollars to finish Rural Tree Middle School and shift the elementary. And we also put aside a million dollars to construct a gym above that, to shift. As part of that, those bond issues, that raised the debt service limit by another four hundred thousand dollars up to two million, seven hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. Currently, as you see on the debt service limit, we're capped off at two million, seven hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars or so. Currently, the school board has debt service printed on these pages over the next few years. In twenty seventeen, it's two point, two million, six hundred and sixty-one thousand, two oh three, and next year it's two million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, two forty-seven. Based on previous board actions before, I guess, the discussions about school construction, I think since we're on record capping those, and that's the limit, you'll need to discuss and talk about where you're heading with the cap on school construction debt service limits.
What was that agreed on debt service limit? What is the debt service limit that approved by previous board, or this board of the fourteenth?
By the fourteenth, we added the four hundred and ten thousand dollars for the Rural Tree Chevy. Bring it up to two million, seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight seventy-four.
Say again.
Two million, seven sixty-three, eight seventy-four.
So, Mr. Dalton, if we, like, if we borrow, if we raise it, if we borrowed ten million dollars, what would that raise our debt service up to next year estimate?
Without a calculator, I'd say about five hundred thousand dollars.
So, it'd be at least a three percent tax, a three cent tax increase.
Would you say, Tim, ten million? Three fifty, three and a half percent. What are you getting interest at?
Twenty years.
But the construction they're calling for, it would be ten, borrowing ten million for the next four years?
Martha, running over, if you went up to the cost as phase one, phase two, cost this?
It's not, uh-uh.
Let's say it's twenty-five million, seventeen million for renovation. Somewhere, I believe, up.
Thirty-seven.
Twenty-five million dollars for new construction for phase one. Multiply it right, three hundred and fifty, forty million is one point four millions, seven cents. But I think that's the first thing you've got to take is what, where are you with debt service? You want to raise it, what amount do you want to raise it? When you do that, I think that's, because that will dictate where the tax rate goes, how much you provide.
And over what period of time would we borrow this money?
Well, to get, with a three and a half percent rate, taxes ain't really qualified. You're limited to ten million a year.
Right.
So, you'd be doing that over ten million, I'd say, at the end of this December, or ten million in January, or sometime next year, ten million the following January, and ten million the following year before your.
And it would just sit in a reserve fund?
Well, if you do it that way, you've got to reinvest it, or the arbitrage is going to catch it. Virginia SNAP program, you can do a bunch of things with it. But currently, you have a very low return on money, so my take on it would be just like you've done in the past, is you borrow that on some kind of interim basis, and just pay on the balance, you draw them down. If you borrow it full-time, then you've got to make those payments start in front. And if you borrow all of it, if you borrow the twenty-five million at one time, only ten million that could be bank-qualified taxes in, the rest of it, you're going to pay probably another one, one and a half percent interest above.
All right, are we saying that it would take approximately three years to get enough money for the school system to start this?
To have it fully funded, be able to see a drawdown schedule, how they would spend it?
That might allow you to start it a year earlier, based on that drawdown schedule.
And in seven years, we could do it without any tax increase, because that's, they pay off. In twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, it drops to one million, eight ninety-two.
Yes.
But by that time, doesn't this next phase of what they're talking about kick in?
Based off the latest schedule, the cap for bringing this phase one, phase two, phase three, you'd be in vain. But whenever you start the first phase, Gary, the rest of it's just going to be pushed back.
Are you talking about Fort Chiswell or Retreat?
No, no, no. Fort Chiswell, well, Fort Chiswell Middle School could use a Retreat's fine shape. I'm talking about Spiller. Yeah, Spiller. Yeah, Spiegel. Then there's got, yeah, it has to be something done with Scott, although, I, you know.
According to this, that's phase two and phase three.
I know, but what I'm saying is, if we start with phase one.
Yeah, but how much are we talking about? If they go through with the Fort Chiswell, I mean, with the George With, and combining Scott and that, and then, what are we talking about a new, if they're talking about a new Spiller down there, how much more are we talking about for a new school?
Yeah. Well, I think the estimate you saw was somewhere around ten million, eight or ten million.
How much?
Eight or ten million.
For?
A new elementary to tear down Scott, maybe it's more than that.
I think the total project came up to fifty-nine, but don't quote me on that. All construction, all three schools.
But I'll go back to where I think I'm at, is where do you, where do you want to go with this debt service limit? That dictates the tax, taxes. Once we start, and once y'all make that decision, you know, if you start phase one with George With, and phase two happens immediately after it's complete. And then, from there, what do you do with the empty school? And I have to dial it off.
If we had stuck to the program we had going, when would this next, I think we approved in previous budget for the school board to get the money to do the planning under the former school improvement plan, and they never asked for that money, is that correct?
To re, to remodel Spiller. Remember when we went over there and?
They had that plan.
Isn't that the money that they used to put the roof on?
No, I don't think they ever got that money.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was money that they had, it was carryover.
No, I'm talking about the money that we had told them that would be available for planning the next phase of the old plan.
Yeah, it was three hundred and some thousand dollars, wasn't it?
Yeah, that was, and that was a carryover, that they had saved. We never allocated that to them, they carried that over. Because that was the money that we were going to pay the architectural firm, if I remember correctly.
Okay, when we went over there on that visit, and the plan of building a two-story section and tearing down part of Spiller, when would that have happened if we would have stuck to the old plan?
We would have looked at it this year.
The design of it would have happened twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, and we would have been looking at the bidding of it and funding of that was coming this current year we're in. Because the construction would be going on right now.
So, if we stuck to the plan, Spiller would have been taken care of?
At present.
Yeah.
And that would?
And that was that two-story addition from the front, tearing part of it down in the back.
Okay.
But as far as now, the school board has changed directions totally from, from that.
Martha, if you'll flip over to the plan there, the layout, that is the current.
But I'm a little lost, if the school board said that George With is just not renovatable, that, I mean, that it needs to be torn down, that it's just in such bad shape that it can't be used, what are we doing here?
Somewhere along the line, plans changed. Yeah, they changed that they could use the existing George With and add to it a new gym. Yeah, add to whatever's in pink, they would go add to.
Right, but any structural defects that they were talking about are still present.
Oh, yeah. What are the structural defects he's talking about?
There was a meeting, or a public hearing, that they held in the fall, and it highlighted electrical defects, and plumbing defects, and foundation defects. And I don't remember exactly. The electronics wouldn't go through the current electrical system, the plumbing didn't have the capacity for additional, and there were problems with the foundation, if I remember his slide. That one, yeah.
And so, let me just think through this. If we, all right, if a minimum of three years it would take us to get the money, and even with what you're saying, Steve, if we could start a year early, that's, that's two years down the road, which means taxes would increase, would be increased for two years before the public saw any of that tax money in action. And that, is that, am I reading that right?
Well, you'll see construction going on, you won't be able to go in.
Well, but construction wouldn't start until there was the, until there was enough of a nest egg to, to start it. Is that?
I'm not sure that that's what I heard, Gary. What I heard was, under this, and I guess this is a discussion too, under the, what I heard him say, the school board say, is that the contractor would be willing to start and delay payment until, as we got money.
Is that a good thing to do?
We've never done that. What happens if, if you get into a conflict? How do you ever get it resolved? Because you, if somebody does that, you're going to sign a contract that says you're obligated to pay. This stage is almost like a bond issue, it's almost. So, you know, that's, that's what I heard, that it could be done, and how they were proposing to move forward. Would we do that? That's a new concept, probably contrary to some of our learn, or my learning, anyway.
Amen to that.
Wouldn't the job go out to bid to other contractors too?
Nope.
Now, under a triple P.A., three P.A., the way it's done is, you know, somebody will give you an unsolicited proposal, then you go back out and ask for other proposals, and then you, as the owner, select which one you feel is the best. It doesn't mean money, or anything, it's who you feel is the best firm to complete that process.
Can I ask you just an obvious question? How many truly unsolicited proposals are made? Okay, that's, I, I, I mean, I can't see people driving down the interstate thinking, gosh, I'm going to stop in this county and give them a proposal for a new school.
Well, clear up one thing here, May fourteenth, that drop of reliability, Millie, you wrote an article that said thirty-seven million dollars requested by school board for Wood County Board Supervisors, George With High School, Scott Middle School, and on the current George With site, thirty-seven million. And Millie wrote on down here a couple more paragraphs, and says, "Part of thirty-seven million dollar estimate will go toward installing portable air conditioners in classrooms at Fort Chiswell High School, Scott Middle School, Spiller Elementary, and George With." The school board preliminary bill and plan, no decisions been made, that, but that's historic date of May fourteenth, what's it called?
Well, I know they've already put temporary air conditioning in Spiller, have they done it in any of the other schools?
Scott and George with.
Okay.
I have been by Fort Chiswell, but if you go by the school, you'll see that big silver vent sticking out of each one of the classrooms.
I think they put some second floor at Fort Chiswell, and if those panels that were inbuilt in the windows, I think they've installed some there.
So, in twenty twenty-three, one point six, four seven, three fifty-three comes off the debt service. If we waited to then, I mean, for that to come off, how quick could we start school construction with a pay down starting and paying full, paying the debt service in twenty twenty-four?
Well, I think you can be prepared to start June the first, twenty twenty-four, because that's when the fiscal year starts.
The rule applies, you can't get debt if you don't have the money for that, correct? You can't create a debt without having approved the money, is that right?
You can. The board supervisor, nobody can borrow money in this county until the board supervisor approves that, through a public hearing process.
Which means that faith and credit of the county is behind it.
Yes. And those bond documents, the way, since Wood County is treated as a city, one of only two counties, I think, in Virginia, is that our bonds say that it's a general obligation that what will happen if you don't have enough money to pay, the bondholders can tell you to raise the taxes, pay. And that's a simple action to the court system, that removes you from the whole process.
And we have some bonds like that, don't we?
Yes, all very well.
All, okay. Yeah, right.
I'm not in favor of raising taxes anytime soon. And, you know, and I want to see the schools improve just as much as anybody else does in the county. But I think we got to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money, and, and look at, we're already paying two point six, almost two point seven million dollars now in, in debt service for the schools.
Mr. Dalton, what is outfall? What, what is the result of this whole question if we agree to leave the debt service cap where it is right now?
If you leave the debt service cap, the message they send the school boards, we're not going to borrow any money, we're not moving forward for the school construction until the debt service is paid down. That's the message. Am I hearing that right? Y'all correct, that's, that's the message I'm hearing.
Well, that was a question that I asked, if you gave an answer.
I guess one thing concerns me, and maybe it's just the people I see, but it's not, I'm not talking about Retreat people, I'm talking about, you know, people in, in the community. Nobody that's talked to me has much been in favor of this, of, you know, of building a new facility out at, at George With. But, but again, that may just be the, you know, the group of people that, you know, that are, that are talking to me, because also, a group of people talk to me are against the Expo Center.
You've got to change your group of friends.
Yeah, no. My, my friends are okay. Matter of fact, some of them.
You know, I went, I went to the meet, and so did Steve and Charlie. And, you know, the ones, the majority of the people there want new school construction, and some are wanting remodeling. But like, out in the community, you know, I've heard.
Well, and when I say construction, I was talking about this plan new, I, I think everybody, everybody, I would be, I, I, you know, just, you know, right now, without any further discussion, I'd be all in favor of, of money for, you know, for, for renovation.
Everybody I've talked to have been on the same lines, everybody feels that we need to renovate. Very few have wanted to build new, and that's here in town.
That's what I've been here.
Is.
So, you've heard the same thing, Mr.?
Yes.
I've been here for three superintendents in schools, and I can't understand why, when it was good enough for them, what we were doing, all of a sudden it's not doing that. And I'm going to stand there.
Can the old plan, can we go, or if they chose to, could they go back to that?
Sure, I mean, we've had, since I've been here, we've had one, two, three, four, five facility studies. Each one recommended just a little bit different. We have, while they changed order sometimes of which was next, it's really never changed. The whole theory when we started, quite a few years ago, almost twenty now, was that school buildings and all buildings wear out. Technology changes, electricity needs change, wiring, computer systems, with all that bulk that's in drawdown, has to change. Is it a big deal? No, it's not a big deal. Some of the biggest buildings in Virginia have been renovated in Richmond.
Good point. Most, most of my working career has been in remodeling and repurposing buildings. As long as you have a strong, reliable structure, and this goes from Ohio University at Athens to building UVA, school buildings across the state. If you have a reliable structure, there's a lot of things that can be done with a little bit of money. Some of the highlights that school superintendents almost take, they've showed some schools in Wise County, I would demand equal time that we go look at renovating schools, and see which buildings look more durable to be now. Steve went to school in Orange County most of.
I was here.
Old school. Well, they had a school building in Orange County that was an elementary school, sitting in the front block. And this is then, twelve years ago, I think, fifteen to most, time flies later, you're like, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we turned that into the most attractive school board office, and advanced education in the back of it, and repurposed that school. It's called Harrison Tyler now, it's on the hill right there in Orange. There's so much you can do with a good building, and if you don't do that with a good building, the question Mr. Dalton asked a while back, what are you going to do with this one you got that you're going to abandon? That, that creates another problem. Now, down in Ameri County, we repurposed a school that was built in nineteen thirty-two, though it had a dual school system, and after integration, they abandoned it. We moved the school board office into one wing, renovated the rest of it, and the school board wanted back from the county. board wanted back from the county because they didn't think it could ever look like that again. So now the school's got it back in the school system. They gave it back to the supervisor because they didn't think it could be fixed. Strong structure, good layout, was built like so you could move some walls, rewired it, new mechanical system. The most recent one that I've done is J.I. Burton in Wise County, but actually in the town of Norton. And we put in a 21st century mechanical and air system there that's working fine and saving them money every day on energy. So it's just not true that you can't repurpose an existing building.
Well, I guess from my point of view, I think that we've got an even closer example than that, and it's Retreat High School. I mean, you know, if there was anything wrong with Retreat, you all know I'd be barking about it. But Retreat is, I mean, they have renovated it and they've made it, you know, a great school. When we talk about, you know, schools for the next 30 or 40 years, Retreat's going to be, I mean, I don't know how you could have made it any better for, you know, to be prepared to go into the next, you know, 30 or 40 years. And I don't know, I, yeah, for me, it just seems like if you, you know, if you can do it at one school, yeah, it's possible to do at another.
A real test, I think, the litmus test, is the Bayou Lake Roll Creek High School with the new school we got. Structurally and expansion wise and use wise, which one do you think is better? The high school where it is today or the new elementary school it's built? As far as quality?
As far as quality, right now, I would say the high school.
That's my point. Put that right.
Well, I.
Let me figure out your opinion.
In all honesty, I mean, you know, and it depends on what you do, because folks in the library at Retreat, they still have library furniture that was put in there when the school was built. Yeah, I mean, it's been there that long because it was, you know, at that point, it was, you know, it was quality, you know, quality.
Probably made about the same.
What have they been? I don't know.
And that's where they bought all the school parks from.
So I guess before we go any further, it's about discussing anything, is we go decide not to raise the limit on the debt service or leave it like it is? And I guess, you know, I entertain any motions to raise it.
Based on, may I?
Yep.
I guess based off what I'm hearing, I'm just going to try to summarize this. I think I've heard five people at least on the board saying they would be in favor of funding a renovation project.
Yeah, I'm in favor of renovating. And I'm not going to say me, though. You know, we got bad on me.
And I think what we really know is for a high school, it takes about 10 million bucks.
Well, I think Retreat was 10 million? Okay, yeah, George With's a little larger. I don't know, it may take, you know, I don't know if it'll take any, you know, any more than that, but.
But if we still do it before we pay down any debt service, we still will have to have a tax increase of at least two to three cents, or hopefully if we get new industry in or businesses in or create new tax revenue some other way.
But now, we're talking about a tax increase, we can't do it until next year.
Next year anyway.
Right.
To commit yourself, if you borrowed the money between now and the next fiscal year before you budget, you're committing yourself to a tax increase. That's what you're doing.
Right. But it wouldn't go into effect until the next budget year.
And actually, probably what would happen, if his, the renovation, it's going to take 18 months or it's going to take about six months to design, it's about a two-year project, kind of bidding process. For the first year, what you'd really be doing is paying interest only, probably interest only, you're drawing that money down until you really got into the school construction, $100,000 or something in the first year, sort of like how we structured the Expo Bar, because we structured the first two years of that venture some.
So that it could be delayed even another year, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Or year and a half or whatever, yeah.
Well, we've heard that even with Chevy, that last bar, that's making a real heavy payout, but in that.
Second year.
Second year and then, but it's really the third year, the time you draw the money out.
Yeah, if you wanted to look at that, what we'd do is try to develop some kind of draw schedule historically of how that happens. That way you know exactly how much money that you'd be drawing down and paying interest on, because you only pay interest on what you draw down.
I guess before, you know, we can make a decision on what we're going to do is go back to the school board and ask them to come up with a, if we're in favor of remodeling, what they're going to remodel and what the estimated cost of it's going to be.
When Spiller was a hot topic, they had a plan that they were going to do at Spiller.
But, you know, they went away from that and said Spiller, the location is not suitable.
Well, also, what I was told was that George With is in such bad shape that it needs it worse than, matter of fact, I was talking to, you remember Friday, you know, Kyle and because, you know, I asked that, and it said, you know, George With was in much worse shape than Spiller, but, you know, for years it'd been, you know, the need was Spiller. And I know that we started on kind of a cycle. We started with the county schools, and any cycle's got to have a beginning and an end. So we started in the county schools and now came back around to the, to the schools in town. But I guess the thing that's hard to understand is everything has just completely changed.
And some other, you know, they're wanting to decrease the number of classrooms that we have in the county, you know, at George With, and well, even the remodeling of Spiller, they was talking about getting rid of four, or that whole upper section of classrooms. And, you know, I'm hoping the county will grow, and I hate to see us get rid of classroom space and then down the road, need classrooms.
Well, one, yeah, one thing is, yeah, when I went to, to Retreat, and Steve, when you went to George With, yeah, there were more students at George With than there are now, but, you know, the reason it could accommodate easily so many more students was because of the academic program. You know, now there are so many singleton courses, you know, that are only taught once and stuff like that. So I agree, I think that the need is probably for as much classroom space as you can, you can have instead of, instead of cutting it back.
When it seemed logical to you guys, if George With is so decrepit and in the process of failure, that if you were going to a bank to get the money, you would invite the bankers out and let them see why you needed the money. We haven't seen anything that's wrong with George With. This is something that's been talked about and recorded on, but have you seen any of the problems in George With? Steve, you've got construction experience. It might be that a few things need fixed now that could be in the plan that you wouldn't have fixed later, and these would come under your maintenance budget.
There are some things that I've seen in the last couple of years doing concessions and whatever that need to be fixed.
Right.
But I don't know that they're considered a capital fix versus just a general expenditure fix.
And I guess I'll get tired of hearing me beat on the roofing situation. Quite often, $200 or $300 or $4,000 or $5,000 can fix a leak and get you another five years out of the roof. And we've sat here and talked about this and still don't know what's going on with the vocational school roof. But I do know now that they're using a second grade material, and I think one was the same contractor. And was it ever bid? No. So how do you circumvent procurement laws?
So you said that they're replacing the vocational school roof now, or they have it so?
That was on the schedule to be replaced. I guess the only thing I'll say there, I believe I saw an advertisement, I don't read the newspaper very often, but I think I saw an advertisement in the paper that advertised for construction bids for roof replacement and technologies. I don't know how that turned out. For some reason, I think I saw it in the pavement replacement at the airport. Those are the two.
You mean might have been in the same paper? Or I think you saw this at some.
Yeah.
Well.
The one at the airport, they sent me, so I knew it was that.
From close to 40 years of following this, I've run into this in a local school system in the county where Marksville is, that you put something out to bid with set specifications. One contractor knew he was not going to have to comply with those specifications, and guess what? He was low. Every time he was low, he was Marksville contractor. Put out a set of rigid specifications, you take bids, you got one home cooking going on here that knows he's not going to comply, he'll be low every time, and he can make a nice profit every time.
Well, adherence to the specifications, Joe, in every project, if you allow somebody not to adhere to them, you give them that contractor an unfair advantage in the bid process.
Right.
If he knows that inherently, that I don't have to comply, I can cut hundreds of thousands of dollars out, I'll always bid a low bid.
Well, I'll say this unquickly. If we hadn't, if Pittsburgh hadn't been involved in a gym at Chevy, a roofing system would have been put on Chevy that was never considered or never specified. I attended the pre-construction meeting, and as late as the pre-construction meeting, the contractor was there pleading to let us put on a different system than what everybody bid. I truly believe that if I hadn't sat in on that meeting, it would have been approved after the fact. That's just not right.
I agree with you.
Well, I'll give you my views. I would be all for, if we had to raise taxes, raise taxes for the schools, I would be all for raising the, you know, the debt limit if we, if we need to, if, if it's a reasonable profit. I'm not, at this point, I am not in favor of borrowing $10 million now so that it can sit somewhere and then borrow another $10 million so it can sit somewhere and then borrow another, you know, $10 million before, you know, before they would, you know, any kind of construction would start. Again, that's just, yeah, just throw that out as my opinion. Because also, if the schools need renovation, and we all, I mean, we were all, I think we were all prepared to just go ahead and follow along with that plan that they had and so that, so that school construction, you know, would, you know, would be going on and renovation would be going on, and.
I think that is true here, because we allow them to carry over those monies for engineering, the design, Spiller, with clear indication as soon as it's bid.
And I think, I thought that that was, the number that stuck in my mind was $386,000, but maybe it wasn't quite that much, I don't know.
It's 300, so.
Okay. But.
They would remember that.
And because I want, I want what is, you know, is, is, is good for, for our kids, and I think that, you know, that we all do, but we also want it done well and done correctly, done efficiently, and done as, as cost effectively as we, as we possibly can.
So is it consensus, everybody, that we go back to the school board and ask to continue with the previous plan that we, we've agreed to in the past?
Well, of course, they don't have to agree to that, do they?
No.
No, I think your, your discussion is how much you're willing to provide.
Yeah.
And I guess because it's above minimum, say, requirements, it's construction, you can say it's tied to this, this, or this, or you can't have it. That's what you can say.
I don't understand that part at all, that they don't have to accept. No funding happens except through here. They can't borrow money, they can't tax. So if we don't approve the money, how can they stick with this plan?
No, no, no. That wasn't what I said, Joe. I said, what if they, what if they said no? I mean, if we said, okay, we're going to, you know, this year we're going to borrow $10 million so that you can start renovation, and they say, well, no, we're not going to start renovation. So that.
So we wouldn't give them money to plan it, and they'd be right back at zero, wouldn't they?
Well, that was, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
Yep.
Dalton Rashman, I do believe that over time, as things change, priorities change.
Right.
Whether it be Spiller or George With. I don't think the price tag is going to change much except for inflation. And I think it is the school board's job to determine which one of the schools is the top priority. If they now said, well, Spiller, we can make do if we do this, but if you say we're only going to give, the board's going to give $10 million for renovation price, that priority may change based on the funding and per can you provide.
Okay, but under that then, if we said, okay, we're going to give $10 million, if they say, well, you know, we don't want to renovate, we're just going to set on the $10 million, I mean.
Well, you never appropriate, you never borrow.
Okay.
And if we, if we look at that.
Thing, I mean, you offer up $10 million, if you, if you offer up $10 million, or $5 million, or $8 million, provide us, you say the school will provide us what your top priority has, what would be your top priority to spend this month? I don't think, I think it's got to be a given take if you decide how much month, but it appears that you are pretty convinced that renovation is better, is what you want to fund instead of new construction.
That was one caveat that you didn't cover. I'm opposed to giving up $10. I'm opposed to giving them a $10 million approval because that's what they're going to be. I also agree with you that they have the right to choose which school comes in priority. But is there any language, and this is just me personally, that we can put into this PPEA approach? Because if they did a deal on PPEA, $10 million would be gone, and we won't have gotten $10 million worth of work out of it. Do they have the authority to approve PPEA?
I guess this is one time I won't play lawyer. They may have, but my belief is, if you tell them, we'll provide $10 million under a normal design bid process, then that's how they would have to do it.
Okay.
I think if you said, and I, if you got the indication, I said, just give them $10 million.
No, no, but it did sound like we were talking about $10 million would be available, and I think there's too much wiggle room there, that we could be getting something we don't want until we see it.
Well, I think, I agree with that, but I guess my words were too loosely worded there. The indication here is that we might fund up to $10 million after we see what you propose.
Okay. This is dangerous, but we agree on that, don't we?
Yeah.
So I guess I was too loose with my words there.
We're not going to get by the clues anymore, do we, with that? You better stop that.
Well, Coy, what do you think? I mean, you were on the school board and.
I happen to like the way that we were going, and I thought eventually we would get schools all renovated and be time to start over again. It's not, it's not overnight thing. And when the schools in my district have been renovated and I couldn't ask for nothing no better, Max and Ed, I think it's a beautiful school. I see nothing at all wrong with renovating. And I'm not, I'm not sure what kind of money, when he talks about building a new, you're with us, what kind of school you're going to be, I mean, what is it? It's going to be what we, what we want, or better, or worse? Who knows? I don't know.
Well, I would say, Coy, any, if you've got a good price advantage under any, you'll end up with a better looking school, more functional, either new construction or renovation. We do have some limitations on renovations, but, yeah, schools have to be renovated all the time, and buildings wear out. I've said that here, I've said there. But you can extend the life of a building, just like you do the life of your home, by doing annual maintenance. And that's how you extend the life of a building. I mean, the concrete, the brick, and the mortar is there. And electrical systems for 1950 is not good for 2016 or 2020. It's just different.
You know, the school in Ivoburg in 1970 is still tan. It's didn't have no center in it. Walls still are, walls and the windows opening still there.
Well, the one advantage to this, I agree, is the ease at which you can share middle school and high school teachers. However, you know, as close in proximity as Scott and George with are, that's not too big a problem, because right now, I know that there are teachers that are going, you know, this year that will be going from Royal Retreat, you know, to George with, and maybe vice versa, and also maybe sharing with Fort Chisels. So I don't see that that is enough of a, enough of a reason to, yeah, to, yeah, that solely to do this.
Combined schools here, it depends on where you're looking at it in concept, and where they dealt with it in bricks and mortar reality. Spotsley County tried this 20 years ago, Chancellor School, Chancellor High School and Chancellor Middle School is overlaid two stories, all on the same campus. They don't like it. I don't think it's that it's both of them on the same campus, I think it's that they built for an architect line that we can do this with the middle school being upstairs and the senior high being downstairs and overlaid. You understand what I mean? They're in the same building. This footprint here, with some design criteria to separate schools, like part of petitions, like we used to pull that lock because of fungicat in that school, you got to isolate the part of the school for after-school activities, and it would take considerable amount of thought process because it's sort of like inmates, you can do all the thinking you want to, but they're there every day trying to figure a way to get around it. You got to put a lot of thought in the layout of how the two schools interface and function and inform. And sometimes, well, I've never thought architects understood traffic patterns at school. Too many things happen in the same place when the bell rings.
Well, like, you know, Royal Retreat has always been a combined school. I mean, it, you know, it's always been, it was always elementary and then high school. And there was no clamor for a new elementary school, you know, from people retreat, it was, it was a school board decision to go to the middle school concept. And so, you know, they separated the elementary kids and then put the middle school, you know, in the elementary wing. So, I mean, I, you know, combined schools, you know, can work.
But you have a clear, deep, marketing line there.
Well, yeah, and plus, you have a tradition, you know, that they've always been, always been combined, yeah.
I really liked what Mr. Dalton had to say there, you know. Here it is, you can't, well, you think you're going to be the best school.
So what do we need to decide on? We've talked about so much.
Well, I go back to where I was at a few minutes ago. I think I've heard the board and the group basically saying they want to continue the traditional method of renovation of schools, that we are not in favor of funding a public-private partnership construction. And what we would like, though, from the school board, is under those conditions, what would you propose as your next project, and how much would it cost? Let them make that decision, send it back. If they say, we'll just wait until we can build a new school, I guess that's where we'll be. That will be their decision.
Everybody agreeable with that? Okey-dokey.
How much, how much money did Carroll County spend on that school?
The house. It seems neat, the way they did it, three phases, and it was $20 some million.
And no taxes, $20 some million.
But what did they get? Our schools all have two gyms, theirs has one gym. I'll take our schools over their school, and I'm from Carroll right now. It's just the way our schools are laid out, it's just better. They don't get a good education, I just think they're better.
Have we agreed on something, Mr. Chairman?
I think we were agreed that Mr. Dalton go back to the school superintendent and relay our thoughts on the matter and see what they come up with.
As a matter of fact, since this is a work session, you really can't make any motions. If you want to make a motion back, you can go back to the work session.
Do we need a motion for that?
I don't think so. I would ask, I don't mind going to superintendent saying that, but it's probably better if we have a member or two of the board. Coy, are you our representative liaison at the school? Maybe the liaison and the chairman or somebody?
You want to set up a meeting with Dr. Perry and the chairman and vice chairman?
That'd be good, I think.
I'd like to have that comment, since you brought it up, but we want to count. Gary Talkback. Pulaski County is getting ready to away with two perfectly good middle schools and build a new middle school at the high school.
What?
There's nothing world wrong with Dublin High School, they usually design, it's Spitaloa Design School, it's had additions, what are they going to do with it? They've already done with the old high school, they couldn't take anything to it, I mean, the 1920s high school. Dublin was built a few years before George with, maybe two or three years. Now, they're talking about consolidation 101, they got consolidated high schools. The next step was to get consolidated middle schools. If you look at that trend, that's what these counties are going to. And the value is, it's not going to happen, I don't think, at West County, but you can manipulate that by how you do your school, to where you get forced to paint yourself into a corner that that's the only way to make sense. That's just the observation of an old man.
Well, I don't know about Pulaski Middle, I don't know that I was ever in Pulaski Middle, but, you know, of course, I spent four years at Dublin Middle School. You know, of course, when you talk about Pulaski, you know, they were doing the, you know, all the newest and the trendiest thing when they built that, built that new high school, and it was going to be without walls and everything, you know, the open, open concept, just like Sheffy was built and Spiegel and.
Roger was built that way.
Yeah, because that was the, that was the newest, you know, best thing, and boy, it didn't take them but just a little bit until they started putting up walls. Yeah, so, yeah. Hmm, I didn't know that about, that Pulaski County.
I think it's safe. The thing is still standing there just like a fort, and the concrete had body.
Don't understand that one.
Well, he talked about George with being in such bad shape. That leads to the maintenance, have they not been doing maintenance on them? How does it get so bad when it's used all the time?
How long did we take that school to actually walk, build, four years ago?
I was reading the minutes of that earlier today.
We never visited George with because it wasn't on the radar. We visited Spiller.
Royal Retreat, Sheffy.
Sheffy, Scott.
We went to Spiegel.
Yeah.
And I was appalled at Spiegel.
I was too, and if you notice, nobody is mentioning Spiegel.
Right.
Because I think, we're not mentioning Spiegel because I think I know what the ultimate plan is.
Charlie, the Spiegel toilets are vintage 1935.
They use a lot of water, but they work good, don't they?
There's our open stock again. Even the petitions are dated back then. They went into the kitchen.
So all the schools now have air conditioning, even though it's temporary, except for Spiegel?
If Joe says Fort Chisels got it, I know all the town schools have it because I've drove around each one of them.
Do you remember in the last renovation at Fordville High School was, what, six, seven years ago, eight years ago, they did, filled in those panels between the windows? There is now some aluminum square things have been installed. I assume that was somehow make that better, or I haven't been.
Fort Chisels, we did just a little bit, added the middle school in 2002 or the one, whatever it was. Fort Chisels High School was renovated in 91 or '92.
Yeah, that was a big renovation. That's when they filled in the windows and added gyms.
So, am I hearing this right, that every school will either have permanent or temporary air conditioning, except Spiegel?
That's what I didn't read the address.
Do those kids not get hot?
Well.
Mr. Horny was here, we would find out. I have not been to Spiegel.
Well, I mean.
I mean, is there any way that we can look at our budget this year?
Yeah.
And see how much the temporary air conditioning costs for those schools, and see if we can't put it in Spiegel too?
We can. We'll probably get a copy of the bid stuff that they did for this school. But all it is, is to fill in the window with this square aluminum vent, and it can help it's running, the vents are straight out, it's running, following down, it's closing. So I was like, I'd been for my air, for my.
Dryer.
Dryer.
Because I think if we're doing it for all the other students and all the other schools, we need to do it for them too.
I agree. I, you know, it may be, it may be a small school, but there's still kids there.
Yeah. Okay, at our work session on the capital improvements for the school system, Mr. Dalton, is there anything else we can discuss?
Under the work session, we'll leave the gym, and that's all we can talk about.
Okay. If that's all, then we're in recess until 7:00 p.m.
I'll go to dinner or back.
I'll call the August the 9th, 2016 Board Supervisor Meeting back to order from recess. We have Roger Creer here from Royal Retreat Pentecostal Hall in this church to do our invocation. Would everybody please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Jochowards?
It's always a delight to come and be with you guys. I don't feel like it's enough, but I did leave you an ink pen again, if you'd like to use it, cheap one. I was delighted when I came in that one of our older ones was even here on the stand tonight. But at least they're being used. I'm not here to share wisdom or nothing with you guys, but a word just to spin on my heart to just lay it out to you as we start this evening, is perspective. The difference in average people and achieving people, of which I believe you are, is perspective, how you see things. And I know you as leaders of West County have to see things in a good way and work together. Let's pray this evening. Our heavenly Father, we're truly grateful and thankful to you for your many, many blessings upon us. I thank you, Lord, for this group of leaders, dear Father, that lead the county and make decisions, make choices. hearing on the CDBG funding, and I'll read the public notice. With County will hold a public hearing on August the 9th, 2016, at 7:05 p.m. in the boardroom of the County Administration Building, 340 South 6th Street, Withfield, Virginia, to solicit public input on local community development and housing needs in relation to community development block grant funding for the project in our community. Excuse me. Information on the amount of funding available, the requirements on benefits to low and modern income persons, eligible activities and plans to minimize displacement and provide displacement assistance as necessary will be available. Citizens will also be given the opportunity to comment on With County's past use of CDBG funds. All interested citizens are urged to attend for additional information. Contact Jeremy Farley, Public Information Officer, at 276-2345, 223-4500, or by email at wythepio@withco.org. Complaints and grievances can be submitted in writing to the With County at 340 South 6th Street, or by phone at 276-223-4500, and TDD-800-828-1120 until August the 9th, 2016. If you plan to attend and have any special needs, requirements, please call the number listed above. Orders of the With County Board of Supervisors are Salel Dalton, County Administrator. And I'll now open the floor up for anybody who would like to speak concerning the public hearing.
I guess from the staff's perspective, the project, the proposed funding application or half funding application is to provide wastewater lines up to the lot 19 and 20, which is the proposed new factory for industrial plant progress park that deals with the processing of the cherry plants for the next few years. New building, Phase One of the building is about $20,000, $20,000 square foot, excuse me, the proposed investments somewhere above $20 million and 60-plus new jobs with an average pay of $60,000. And this will provide wastewater service to them. They already have public water available. That's the project, the essence of what we're applying.
Okay, again, I'll open up the floor for anybody who'd like to speak in the public hearing. Hearing that, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Dalton, anything else we need to do for that?
This is the first of the two public hearings. This is the general public hearing. The next one will be project specific, follow the details of what we're applying for, how it will be spent, that requirement to offer the jobs to low and modern income people.
Okay. Okay, moving right on into our agenda. We have citizens' time. We have Ms. Myers.
Yes, gentlemen, I have some questions. There's nothing about the Expo Center or the Lane Group on your agenda. Are you going to address any of that this evening?
Yes, we'll be talking about, we received today the Lane Group's proposal for Phase One Architectural Services.
Okay. On, after the meeting last week, or the last meeting, you were talking about 106, 830 that you were going to budget, but it said other costs, and there was no money attached to the other costs for advertising, telecommunications, mileage, travel, so on and so forth. Do you know what that figure might be in addition to the 106, 830?
Mr. Dalton, that included in the 106?
Yes.
It was included? Okay, so that wasn't on there. All right. And are you going to stick with the Lane Group throughout this project? There seems to be like a monopoly going on. There's a couple, quite, well, not quite a few, just a few of these technical groups in Virginia, and they seem to be all in cahoots. And that doesn't work best for the public. So, I was wondering if you had thought about going outside or putting anything. There's several newspapers. One's called the Engineering News. Another one is Construction Global. That's a magazine and a website. And then there's 17 construction news sites that are easily accessible. And I was wondering if by chance anybody had thought about putting an article with perhaps some information or pictures and sending it to any of these periodicals with With County's contact information, just in case there might be somebody that would be interested in doing this or getting bids for what we have demonstrated that what you guys are talking about.
We'll be doing the RFPs. We'll put the grade in.
The architectural selection, we did advertise that. We got over 10 proposals in. We interviewed people, the firms, and selected the Lane Group as the most qualified firm, and that's where we stand today. But we do advertise every time we have a project for engineering. I guess on all the water projects, we get multiple proposals from all over the state of Virginia and sometimes out of the state.
Okay.
And currently, we have, I think, at least six engineering and architectural firms doing work for us, so there's really no monopoly. It's spread around different groups, whoever's the most qualified for that particular project.
There just seems to be an underlying network of all these groups, that they're all intertwined. Anyway, in addition to that, please think of the public when you're thinking of this, and I'm sure you've thought about it too. None of this should happen without sanitary services. A tree line is not sufficient for anybody. So, that really has to be a priority with anything going on there, to have that facility there. You can't ask, I mean, you can't put up any kind of a square foot building without having some kind of sanitary facilities. Even if you don't include seats and ask everybody to bring their own chairs, you've got to have sanitary facilities. That's really, really a priority on everybody's list. Okay, I'm looking forward to hearing about this.
Okay, Mr. Hale.
Ms. Myers. I want to apologize for you being privy to misinformation. There's already public sewer on that site.
Oh.
And it's part of the design. There's public water there in a plumbing. There's a very good public sewer system there, and all we're going to do is tap onto it with toilet facilities as required by the code.
Okay, all right. That wasn't addressed.
Okay.
Thank you.
There wasn't nobody else that signed up for citizens' time, but I'll keep the floor open for a minute if anybody would like to address the board. Okay, hearing that, I'll close citizens' time. Next item on agenda is the amendments of the previous meeting of July the 26th, 2016. I open the floor up for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion. We accept.
I have a second. Have a motion and a second. Any amendments or corrections need to be made to the minutes.
Noted that it was record time, and you weren't here.
Here and then, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hals.
Aye.
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 And I'll stay because I wasn't here, so, okay, minutes passed. Next item on agenda is payment of invoices. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We pay our invoices.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Pay the invoices. Is any invoice any board member would like to discuss or pull out? Here and then, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni.
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is old business appointments. We have several. Mr. Dalton, you want to address this?
Actually, we've got more than this. Somebody made that. Recreation Commission employment, social services board, we need a one complete on this list. There's completely two terms. Workforce investment board, I sent a copy of the application form to everybody looking for two business people, is what they're looking for. With County Rescue Squad Board of Directors, I think we have two or three of them on that based off, I didn't print out the resignations, with Mr. Jay Wright and Lisa Anderson designing this project.
Okay, so we need to be thinking for people to fill these vacancies. Mr. Dalton, is there anything else on our old business?
Yes.
Okay, moving right along. We have new business. We have Aaron Sizemore here from Mount Rogers PDC. Aaron, good to see you again.
Thank you.
And welcome to With County.
Thank you.
bit about what we do. I usually come by once every two years. I don't like to come by too much because there's not a whole lot to add to what we do. Just the fact is that in 1969, the General Assembly authorized that planning district commissions could be formed, and basically, our local governments got together with Washington Smith, Blenheim With, Carroll Grayson, City of Galak, City of Bristol, and formed the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission. We are governed by the commission, but more directly, we're governed by the executive committee, in which your chairman, Mr. Reeves, is on the executive committee. What we do, the reason that we even exist, is as an extension of local government. We are here to work for you in the places where you either do not have the experience or do not have the capacity. We specialize in grant writing and in grant administration, and as time goes on, we are more here for capacity than we are for expertise. What we do can be done by most anybody who's willing to sit down with the grant guidelines and work through them and stay on the phone with DHCD or VDOT or whoever, but a lot of times, the grant administration monies that you use while the grant is going on may be able to pay for a position during that time, but if you don't get one year after year, then there you are looking for a place to fund that position. So, where we work and spread our work out through all these localities, we always have enough of these going on that when you have this need for planning or for grant management or whatever it may be, then we can step in for you during the time that that's going on. We can write it and administer it. And of course, you know, we get the fees for administration during that time, and then when the grant is gone, we go away when you don't need us. There are some things that we're always doing. There is some planning that we always do. We update the comprehensive economic development strategies. If you apply for money for EDA, you have to have a SED. And so, we keep that throughout the region, and we maintain it, update it every year, and rewrite it every five years. We do this for all localities as a regional plan. Also, we have our indoor plumbing rehab. That's if you have houses that your local service providers cannot service. We have a pot of money that if they don't have a bathroom, basically, we can come in and rehab the house and give those services. We have water wastewater funding. This is for water projects, wastewater projects, just like it says. You apply to us. This is money that are handed down from the General Assembly to the PDCs, 1, 2, and 3. We look over about, a little over $700,000, take applications yearly, fund these projects. Some of them are actually technical assistance, which you'll see paying for engineering and things, but a lot of it is implementation, which you'll see actually going into ground. We did update the comprehensive plan. It's been maybe two years ago for the county. We do keep DEQ off of everyone's back with the solid waste management. We always submit to them everyone's solid waste plans and just approve of them with their cycling and things that they require are being done. With transportation, the, what's now House Bill 2, which I think they changed that to Smart Scale, but with that, we have a role technical committee. Stephen Bear's on that committee. We all get together and prioritize these regional projects, and sometimes we submit on behalf of the localities if we think that will be advantageous in the scoring process. Sometimes we don't. It just depends on how the group sees fit to do it. You pay us a little over $18,000 a year for these ongoing services. That's the transportation planning, that's the economic development planning, and also hazard mitigation planning. If you have a disaster and you ask FEMA for money, you don't have a hazard mitigation plan, they don't give you money. So, we maintain that plan for the region. In the event that you do an ARC project, we're a local development district as ARC defines it, and we're the local clearinghouse for that. So, those applications come through us. We put our blessing on them and then send them on in to ARC. All of that is money that comes in from each locality. I guess about 20% of our budget comes locally. All the rest of it, we come through state and federal funding that we use local funding to match and to leverage. On average, a little over $4, almost $4.40 is leverage for every dollar that you put in, so we're not relying on you to pay our bills. We're relying on you to leverage other money. If you're looking at grants, and of course, this is going, this number's going to be high because you are dealing with grants, but for every dollar of local funding spent, the PDC leverages over $30, and that's in construction funds. So, we think that we work for our money and that we're a benefit to you, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to serve you. You have projects or anything, you can always tell your chairman, and he can tell me what to do. So, does he have any questions?
Thank you, Aaron, for all that you do for all the counties and...
Since he wants to be told what to do, putting the application in for wastewater, $100,000 on a project that was over budget. Since you're awful, we expect to get him.
My feelings would be hurt if you didn't ask me for $100,000.
Does anybody have?
We've got you on our minds. Don't worry about it. We know what you're doing.
Again, Aaron, I want to thank you for all you do. You do a good job at the Mount Rogers PDC, and does any board member have any questions for Aaron? Salel, you have any more comments?
I just admitted $100,000 is ungood.
I almost expected Salel to try to fry me, but that was easy.
Thank you, Aaron. Okay, we're down to other on our agenda. Mr. Dalton?
I handed out a copy of the draft proposal, Lane Group, that was last meeting. We had a lot of discussions. Remember the Lane Group week? I guess basically reroutes the proposal for them and send it back to us. I hope that I got everything in that everybody talked about at the last meeting. If not, I'll take 100% blame. What I'd like for them to do, if you can read that and the scope there, is what we want to happen. What we want to happen is give authority for us to basically do that and get them started with designing.
This cost includes seats?
4.8.
$4.8 million?
Okay, I'll open the floor up for discussion. Well, first, I open the floor up for a motion.
I'll make a motion after the rewrite, and it has most of the things in it that I was concerned about and we were concerned about, mainly that the timelines have been significantly adjusted, and it's more comprehensive in what they're going to deliver. So I make a motion that we accept the document.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
The answer to that here is to revise the construction process based off the redesign of what we submitted. I actually took a sketch of a building and seating, told them, gave them the seating manufacturer, who would meet the specs and the cost that I thought. So most of this revision is based on what my research had provided them when I met with.
But the cost of putting seats in is included?
Yes.
I've got one question that's not clear. Mr. Dalton, is the endeavor here to get this on one level?
We never get it all on one level. The arena floor will not be at the same level as the seating. The seating and the office space will be all on one level. Seating on both sides, pad, seating's up here and go down four to five or six feet. Arena floor, backup of the wall, and then the rest of it's on the same floor.
Okay. I know I understood you, but it's going to be one level with the depression for the ring?
Yes.
And if we need to alter that later, it's easy to alter that and bring it all to one level?
Yes.
Okay.
The depression, all you have to do is fill it in and work force.
Right. So the total cost on this is $5.1 million when you add in the fee? 5.5 million, 115,600?
Yes. That does not include, that does not include the grading, rough grading of the sock.
Which is, how much was that? Do you remember? And this is just the rough grading, not the...
This portion takes the finished grading. The rough grading was the first contract that we agreed with Lane. I can't remember the yard it's graded. It's not included in this. This cost is that rough grading is not...
The contract.
The Lane's contract.
Or...
Or the rough grading cost.
The asphalt, the paving of the road, parking lots?
The road will not, only a portion of the road will be paved. The parking lot that has the handicap will be paved. The rest of it will be gravel and grass. Because we'll be parking in the multi-purpose vehicle. But there is enough parking or paved parking or handicap numbers in the building code that require, based off the seating, you've got to have a certain number of handicap parking places. You've got to have a certain number of staff parking places.
Any more questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 No.
An aye. Motion passes 6-1. Mr. Dalton, is there anything else to come forward to board tonight?
On that, let's don't leave that subject in. Mr. Dalton, after your meeting with them and their understanding of what we want, are we going to be able to hold them? Will you be able to hold them to this 30-day completion as described in the contract?
While you will be getting what the next seven days is elevation views in a schematic, they should be working on the schematic prior to approval. So sometime this month, you'll have all that. It will be coming to the Economic Development Committee to review, and they will be bringing that to you to look at those schematics at the 20% level or 30%. But those views are very important of how this thing's going to happen for you to consider. And that is part of the work this time.
Okay, can we task the staff, as soon as that's available, also call a meeting of the Economic Development Committee? So if it gets here before our next board meeting, we'll be prepared to...
We've asked that they, as they give this, I asked that they submit everything like I'm supposed to, so I'm just forwarding them on to you guys as I get them.
Okay, and with that, when it's available, we need to call Economic Development Committee meeting, and we'll take action.
Anything else, Mr. Hale?
I know you're shooting for records, so I'm going filibuster for another 10 minutes.
Mr. Dalton, we have anything else to discuss? Okay, does any board member have anything else to discuss? Hearing none, we are adjourned.
All right.